Mr. Baddaby, support by Bodley. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Approval of the minutes from February 11th, 2013, when you were aboard me.
I make a motion to approve the Mr. Cruz's minutes from February 11th.
I support the motion by Baddaby. Support right there. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Public comment.
Ralph. There's, I'm gonna shorten this up for you guys and everything, but I know there's a few people here that, I guess if you guys would raise your hands if you're for our new softball fence, we've needed one for quite a while. Fence is thirty-plus years old. It's hard to see right now, but believe it or not, softball rolls under it halfway down the thing and it's, it really, we would appreciate you guys spending a whole bunch of money. I know it's a lot of money, but it really could show off the town. The schools and support that I gave, I put a letter up there, Bill and Shannon are here yet. I know the sports boosters, I promise, if the sports boosters won't give enough money for the cap on the fence and you'll allow me to hang some banners up or something on the fence, I'll sell enough to pay for the cap. And that way it'll look good. It can be something real strong for the community when people drive into town. And it's really, it can be great. And I really appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph. Any other public comment?
Yes. Hi, my name is Brad Glasgow and I'm the editor of the Central Lake News. And in the middle of February, I sent the council an email through the website and I wanted to run an article about the logging surplus. And I asked a simple question. I asked, what is the best way for the public to let the council know their opinion? And Mr. Cruzie responded and refused the comment. He said that we needed to establish ourselves in the eyes of the council before you guys talked to us. And I am not here to establish ourselves in the eyes of the council today. We've been a fixture in the community for about a year now. We've had a Facebook group for a year and several of you on the council have been longtime members. You've even used our group to announce the creation of the village Facebook page after saying that we were not established. Now, the community has embraced our Facebook group and our newspaper. Our group has four hundred-plus people in around Central Lake who are concerned with Central Lake. And everyone in the community has been more than happy to grant us interviews, including the school superintendent, the president of the Chamber of Commerce, the historical society, as well as local businesses. So we feel we've been established. The reason I am here is to let you know that we will be contacting most, if not all of you on the council for interviews in the future in order to keep the public informed. For example, I want to interview one or more of you about the Thurston Park proposed changes to see what's, what changes are in store for the park. And we'd like to know who is our contact when we'd like to request interviews? Should we go through the communications committee? Or should we contact the relevant committee directly? How should we handle it? If you could let us know, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, so move along. Police report.
Okay, I'll stand up here a second. Hopefully everybody got a chance to look at the report. Things are picking up for us. Just kind of a good thing. Usually February, end of January, early February is a slow time for us. So it's starting to pick up with the weather getting better, people moving around. Report, all highlights. Obviously Josh is here and I brought Josh today. Josh Jones, somebody you may remember, he worked here when I first started there. Went to work for the county. Still works for the county, but is coming back one or two days a week just to kind of help us out and fill in. I explained to you guys last week, the benefit of that is to kind of hit the floor running. The education, the training, the experience, everything's there. So Josh started last week and we got pretty much most of everything he needs and ready to go. So you'll see him a lot more in the next coming weeks. Well, besides that, did some training. And just, we finalized, Ken and I spent some time this last week finalizing the peddler ordinance, which you guys will have a copy. And we kind of brainstormed some things about forms and applications and stuff like that so we can kind of keep track of who's coming and going, stuff like that. Most of it went to Brian. He's at our ready, so I think we're ready to go on that. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
DEW, can I answer?
Everybody has a copy of DEW operations, I hope. Number two is the biggest thing on there was the ninety-four block truck that the departmental went out, which is basically the rear end of the truck. And we replaced it in-house. I'd never done it, but talked to a couple of the council members. They kind of talked me through how to do it. So they talked me into trying it. We did it. It is repaired, up and running. We've got all the snow piles hauled from town. And overtime is forty hours from this report. Last report had February in it, so this pretty much closes out the snow months for the overtime. Any questions?
Thank you. Correspondence. I have some correspondence. I don't know, the money money will take care of that. We didn't really talk about the money. The other two correspondents I have. One of them was from a gentleman in Texas who was inquiring about whether the barbecue fundraiser type event competition in the village, we're just gonna pass it along to the chamber. And then the chamber can deal with that and come back to us. But that's really chamber matter. The other one, I talked to Sam about this, was about the maintenance of the alley behind Bachman's and help me if I'm wrong, but the village does their best to maintain that alley. It's an alley. People park in it. When they park in it, we can't clog. So if those business owners want to get in the battle of who's gonna park there, who isn't, and are we gonna restrict parking so it can be clogged, or are they gonna maintain it themselves? That's fine and they can come back to us. But right now, we do the best job we can do with the alley used the way it is. So I think those business owners need to get together and come to an agreement. I think that addresses that because we really do try our best. You can't clog a street with cars parked on it. There's no room to get through it. We know it and we'll work on it. That's all I have. Any other? Committee reports. Street, Ralph.
Currently, we've got traditional metal halide lights, thirty-four of them. Our budget to maintain those lights is twenty thousand dollars. We're trying to lower that number by switching over to LED lights. We're working with a company right now to see which is the best route to go. There is a higher upfront cost, but overall, we can lower our wattage per bulb, thus saving money and also at the same time become eligible for consumer power grants. So that's what Sam and I are working on currently, trying to move that forward.
Any questions for Ralph? What's up? Ralph, what's your water?
Sam just submitted the DEQ report and, and the cross-connects report. The usage was up five, a little over five million gallons from 2012 to 2011, with of course June, July and August being the pretty hot ones. It was a lot of water. And other than that, there was, he rebuilt two sewer pumps, residential sewer pumps. And other than that, that's about it. This is the big thing.
Thank you.
We've got extra reports available.
Neil, welcome.
Just welcome Josh to our back.
Thank you.
And I'm sure he's a great addition to our police force. That's about it. I think chief, probably anybody else?
Thank you, Bill. Communications, Denise?
The only thing is I have some questions about the Facebook page, which I think Joe is able to help me with and he's not getting, I think I'm not good there. So that's, that's it.
Thank you. I've been there for a minute with it. As a lot of people know, we approved going forward the Facebook page in February. Mission's computers worked with us pretty diligently in getting that going. We put it out, published it on the third. We've asked it there not be any questions on the Facebook page. We've asked it to be limited to comments. If you have questions, you can get ahold of us through our email or by the messenger on that. Other than that, on the communications side, we're pretty good. We've got most of our reports. There's Mr. Thayer just reported on the DEQ water usage is on there now. We've updated the budget on there and many other things with it, so. Thank you. Why don't you push it on? That's you again.
Again, actually things went real good with it. We closed, pretty well closed out here until we get our adjusted journal line phrase. We can't close the books, but Pat worked really hard at getting our final revenue and expenditure together for us. We look really good. Every one of our accounts came out in the black except for one in the equipment fund, but that's just a minor numbers game that we've got to play in. Pat's working with our auditors there to correct that. So other than that, we should be looking pretty good, I think.
Any questions? Thank you, Joe. Lila, Mark?
Okay, we have been working. We've had men down there helping us. Joe and Rob have been doing a wonderful job helping me. We are planning on redoing the bathrooms in the park itself, not the, up by the, no, the building. We're not going up there. We're doing the one down in the park where the reservations are. It needs to be redone. We need to have some new showers put in down there also. And we're working on that. And we're working also on, we are going to raise the price of renting. It's hard to say, but we haven't done it for years. So now we do have to raise it. And it will be only because we need to, to offset the expenses we're going to be having this year, bringing our park up to where it's going to be a feasible place for families to be there with their children. And as far as the ballpark, I think we're gonna hold that until later on because that's part of our deal. Okay? Anything else?
Thank you. President's report. Likely to set in a park, I don't know, but the village has applied for a grant to put in more docking down in the downside area and to redo the bathroom. So that's in the works. That's all I can tell you. It's been submitted. I couldn't even tell you a dollar amount because the engineers haven't came back with it yet, but they know the plan, the rec plan's been set. The grant will be in April 1st. And we'll just keep up to date on what's happening with that. The, just so the council knows, our revenue and taxes is eight thousand dollars down this year. We looked at it, will absorb it. It's, it is what it is, it's eight thousand dollars less. In 101, it's twenty-two hundred dollars less in local streets, which definitely will absorb it. It's five hundred and fifty dollars in the water. We now know that a lot. A few other things I just, I want to address. There's been some talk around town about our police department being eliminated. I want, I just want everyone here to know, nothing has changed. The budget amount is there. We've replaced our officer. Nothing's changed, so it's all stories appearing. Our police department is just what it was last year. It's on good track. So I don't know where those stories came from, but don't believe them. The other thing is there have been comments to bill's council trustees, and just so we all know it, that to release information, and it's all foible information, I agree, but I think it's bad protocol for people to approach a trustee wanting them to give information about the village. So the policy is, it is what it is. Village information is released through the village office. It's not there's anything to hide, but I don't think it's fair to put Rob or Rod or anybody on the spot and say, would you please give me this? That's not their duty as a trustee. So we just ask that everything goes through the village office. I think that's pretty simple. We also ask that, there's also been people contacting businesses that we do business with, wanting them to give them things about what's going on between the village and them. I think that's incredibly wrong. If you have a question to the village, bring it to the village. You know, just bring it to Pat, call me. We'll answer them, but take them where they belong. There's talk about the house that was burned downtown. There's a lot of talk about the village making into a parking lot. It's never been village-owned property that I know of. It's, it's not village property. There's never been any talk about buying it as village property or putting a parking lot on it. So once again, it's just as, it was privately owned. It was foreclosed on by a bank. The house was burned down, but it has absolutely nothing to do with the village and a parking lot. So now you know what that is. And other than that, things have been nice and quiet. Except the motion for approval of the bills, prepaying the amount of four fifty-six ninety-two, payroll on the amount of five thousand sixteen dollars and eighty-nine cents, payables in the amount of fifteen thousand five hundred fifty-six and eleven cents, for a total approved amount of twenty-one thousand twenty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents.
I make a motion to approve the bills as presented.
As approved. Report. Motion by Chapman, support by Park. Any discussion? Pat, roll call.
Baddaby.
Yes.
Bodley.
Yes.
Chapman.
Yes.
Park.
Yes.
Thayer.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Cruzie.
Yes. Motion passed. Is there any new business? I have none. We're not gonna address under action items. Action items, logging, what we will do with the fourteen thousand dollars received on the logging project. So I will, I will redo the question on the time button. If anybody has any more, please let me know, but I don't think there is. Of course Ralph spoke on the ballpark. That's up to the ball diamond. So we know that idea's there. Another suggestion is to invest it in the safety of the village residents. Many times a day, I see people speeding through downtown. I know the police department can't be everywhere at once. My suggestion is to purchase a speed trap machine. Those machines that sit on the edge of the road and show you how fast you are going. This might help to slow things down. Alternatively, I would suggest a traffic study of the possibility of installing a traffic light at the four corners. Regardless, traffic is moving much faster than twenty-five miles per hour through the downtown area. Thank you. So that's, that's more of that. Another one was wondering if village public restrooms downtown Central Lake could be considered for use of our logging line. I'd like you to consider the softball field fence and possibility of installing public restroom uptown near the majority of the business locations. I'd like to see a beach put in at Thurston Park, a real beach in a safer section of the waterfront. We all know that currents are crazy right next to the bridge, and the lack of a real beach leaves the summer campers and visitors wanting more. So they choose to go to Barnes Park or to Torch Bay Park to play. In regards to the logging line, suggestion for use, extending the sidewalk past the corner store, around the bend and down the road to the village limit sign. Many people walk the side of the road in this area. It would be great if they, we had a sidewalk to provide safe foot travel. Here's a letter from Quinberry's Central Lake Athletic Director. Thank you for the opportunity to correspond with the council on behalf of Central Lake Athletics. I was excited to learn that the village council is looking at the potential of replacing the existing softball fence. I was thrilled to hear of the possible renovation. I would like to be the first to recognize the longstanding relationship of generosity the village has shown at Central Lake Public Schools. We have been honored to use the Ron Donaldson Field for over thirty years. We recognize the benefit to the athletic program as well as the physical education, physical education program. Since the field has been such an asset, I would like to encourage the council to consider renovating the fence. The field's used for regular season contests and state tournament games will be improved with a new fence. The Central Lake Boosters Club is considering aiding the softball program in purchasing fence caps if the project is approved by the council. We are excited to work with the council to keep the Ron Donaldson Field over the nicest indoor in Michigan. So that's what I have. Any discussion? I would like to say that it's fourteen thousand dollars. I think that eliminates quite a few of these public restrooms. Cannot, cannot happen for that amount of money. A beach at Thurston Park just, just can't happen by DEQs. I mean, it just, it's a great idea. We probably all love to see a beach down there, but we can't just rotate sand and create a beach and dump it in the water. The sidewalk out past the corner store, once again, is way over that budget, I'm sure. We'd be cutting down trees, we'd be excavating. There's not replacing a sidewalk. There is no existing sidewalk there at all. And basically no room for one right now with a lot of work.
You'd have to bring fill. You'd have to take into consideration everybody's driveway you go through. Raise your order. Scream.
And Scott assured me he is dealing with downtown traffic, correct?
The best we can, yes.
The best we can. So not, not that they're not all good ideas, but they're, I think Scott's gonna pay a little more attention to that and see if there's a problem there.
The fence project is a logging three on this?
Yes, we have three, three beds in front of it.
The correspondent in six companies on fences, we haven't got that. All right, follow the trigger.
And within this project too, I don't know if you did this, fence sets up there now along the sidewalks would come out and not be replaced. We create true, probably the most seen, it'd be a true ball diamond fencing. The fence along the sidewalks is in such bad shape, it will look better with it gone.
I think we should consider the fence project then.
I mean, it's overwhelming support compared to just a, a couple of emails that we've received.
It would benefit just, just as many or more people as, as any of the other projects, which all seem like pretty good projects.
I personally don't know much more you can do with that money that makes such an impact in our community. Not by the school, they use it.
Well, it's not just the school. We have youth leagues up here that come in and use it. How nice is that to, to show young kids that we care? That's, that's the biggest thing that got me, so I did.
I know, I know for probably six, seven years I've been on the council. I hate to say, but we've all talked about it being a nice organization. We should do something with it. Now we have that opportunity to do something with it.
Wouldn't that also bring other leagues in here to have their?
The other league thing traditionally is a nighttime thing. We didn't have lights and lights would be expensive and I'm not saying somebody couldn't. You know, we've, we've in the past, we've had some softball tournaments there, like pitching machine tournaments and stuff. And the community probably gets as many people come to our softball field as anywhere else in town. I mean, yeah, July 4th, the town is packed with people for the fireworks. That's one day. The softball field has people coming from the first game in April all the way through almost August, where people from other parts of our area and out of the area are coming. The better show we make there, the more, more chance we have somebody coming, spending the extra five bucks at the park.
I agree. That'd be good.
I think we've had community support too to remove all the fence, right? We'll put our, and I'll bring up my, I'll bring up my load and my lift. We can pull fence posts. We'll, we'll help in any way we can to keep the cost down. I know we can get enough people to help tear the fence down and make it, everything is efficient so the village workers aren't overwhelmed. I know those guys are gonna help too, but I think we can make it happen real fast and we'll do anything we can to help the fence. It's also been requested that you can help me with this, Scott, that we save the old fencing so we'll get a use out of that at the other ball field, correct?
Oh yeah, it was just something that Mac and I talked about last year was, you know, not asking for money, just looking at possibly building a batting cage down by the sports complex. But with the fence, the old fence, we could use that to hang it up on the side and on the top just like it is at the softball field. So.
Would it be possible for that, like, you wish you could help, these boys help?
Help.
Help, like turn the fencing down?
Oh, we're gonna make it. It'll be, it'll be, if you don't want to, it'll be there.
I want, I didn't know what you were talking about there.
We'll have lots of, we'll have, I don't know if I get the, the boy friends from the girls on the softball team will be there.
The girls can do just as much as the boys.
Yeah, they'll be there.
I know, there's a bunch of boys sitting there watching.
They're gonna be watching.
Have you looked at the different beds and seen which one would be?
I have, I looked at all three of them.
Maybe a recommendation of one over the others?
I have no recommendation on that. Well, what I would like to say on the old fence, we planned on salvaging the old fence and we had purpose for them.
That was for out here?
At a warehouse up here, just so people are aware of that. If we didn't use all of that, that's fine, but I can't tell you how many people we're gonna use.
The, one from Perfect Fence is thirteen two seventy-five. Quite a bit more. The other two are pretty much in line, eleven nine seventy-four and eleven three. Are they, is Perfect Fence planning to do more or? I don't see any.
They all build the same project.
They all build the same project, start to finish ten foot on center, cement the balls, uh, vantage wire.
Not any heavier fencing.
They all went by specs that I wrote out right here. You, you might have a seat. Right, not by my specs.
Sam, you say they, they are all ten foot on center poles?
All posts are ten foot on center. All top rails are inch and five eights, I believe. All end caps are two inch bigger end posts. Bottom wire, I think it's nine gauge, I'm not sure. I'm not sure what I have on the specs. I'm not, don't remember what gauge wire it was. I told everybody. Everybody got the same piece of paper from that fact.
Twelve nine.
Twelve nine. The reason we went with the heavier fences, so it doesn't bend. To make it, so it stays up longer.
So they wouldn't, in your mind, there in any reason why we wouldn't take the lowest bid then?
No. I don't know about that.
Anybody else know more about it?
You know, I think there's, there might be a few questions to answer, but I mean, really, all in all, it's, it's here.
You know, with the three bids that you have, I personally contacted Perfect Fence, Grand Travers Bay Fence, and Petoskey Fence, and I asked them all the same question. Have you ever done softball, baseball fields? And they all said the same thing, yes. So if you have any we can go look at, they got a list of them, a big arm list where you can go and look at them.
Did any of them say Central Lake Baseball Field?
Nope.
Somebody worked out there that didn't work out good, and I should've thought of that before. But I don't know whoever did the fencing like about two years ago at the backstop and stuff. They probably got a sign on the thing, but that would concern me because there are lots of problems with that company. But I don't, I don't know what it was. I just thought of it as you, you know, it never occurred to me before to mention it.
Well, here's my thought. I, I would love to see us approve it if we do not to exceed by twelve thousand dollars because as we're sitting here now, we, we have questions. I mean, has anybody asked Grand Travers or Petoskey, can you do it by, within our timeframe by that day? I mean, because we do have a timeframe. But I'm just saying, they're so close. If we approve it not to exceed twelve thousand dollars, we have the next week or so to ask these questions. We don't have to wait till next month to come back and say, wow, Grand Travers can't get it done for two weeks.
Your eleven thousand three hundred dollar bid, I did ask you if Travers Bay Fence, if it can be done. The first ball game is the fifteenth of April. Am I right on?
Yep.
And they said they will have it done before the first ball game. They were the only ones that we committed to doing it by that.
But they truly didn't. All I have is this. Got me this? You know, you've been on everyone contracts before, but they're committed to it, but we accept. That's what I'm saying. And I, I'm not saying they're not good or what, that's not good. I'm just saying I think we should nail down things like gates. And I don't think we want to end another month to do it. We want to move on. If we do it.
We could do that, we could approve it a month and then leave the.
I mean, I just feel more comfortable. It was time to answer the questions because we obviously have some questions, but we have them right here, right now.
Yes.
But that's not my decision, that's just my opinion.
I think it was a good suggestion.
It's a good recommendation.
I'll make that motion.
It needs to be completed by April.
Very. I'd make that motion that we approve the twelve thousand dollars from the, of the logging fund, that money there to support the fencing.
Motion by Chapman, support by Thayer. Any more discussion?
So now, we voted it in. When are we gonna actually?
We voted it in, yes.
I'm so sorry. I do have a question though. So when are we gonna have this, now we've got the monies, what now is gonna happen in terms of getting the fence up and running? Because we don't want to wait another month. Are we gonna have the Parks and Rec Committee sit down and look at it?
I would between Parks and Recs and the Finance Committee. I mean, the finance has been approved, in my opinion, so Parks and Rec. I just think that way you, you can do it tomorrow. The next day, it doesn't matter. We'll answer the questions, we're able to. I just think that way you can do it tomorrow, the next day, it doesn't matter, we can answer the questions, we're able to conserve.
Well, like you said, I want a timeframe as well.
Yeah.
Within the week then, is that?
We should put it in the motion that we, that we give the village president authority to sign the contract for the, one of these, whichever one he decides on there. And you can do the legwork and find out what...
I just gotta explain to you how my legwork works, it's like Parks and Rec Committee, tell me what you want. No, but no, that's fine.
You know, you know what questions you want to answer, and we agreed with you on the questions too, you know, the timeframe is important. Maybe check that backstop and see that it doesn't have a Grand Travers Fence standing on it. That may be a concern then, but include that in the motion.
Rob, you've worked pretty close with Ralph. Yeah, me and the way, we're on the third and rec committee. I just know you work a lot of hours.
Okay, there's been a motion by Chapman to approve the spending of, not to exceed twelve thousand dollars for a fencing project at the Ball Diamond. Support by Fair, any further discussion? Pat, roll call?
Fattie?
Yes.
Bodley?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Fair?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Yes, all favor, both passes.
Take the money or run.
They might've been here for one thing.
They don't, they don't have the funds, they can't do districts, so.
Yeah, that's the thing too, right? I guess they're pretty districts or regional service.
Okay, last month, we made a copy of the trust demand. I accept the motion to accept it, the real discussion.
I looked at it, I don't see any.
This is pretty much what they suggested, it's just pretty plain and simple.
It was just a little bit.
The antenna's all still there. I make a motion we approve it.
I'll support, motion by Chapman to approve the trust demand, support by Bodley, any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Accept, Pat, throw your... Dear Village of Central Lake Council, I am tendering my resignation effective April thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen. I will stay the month of May to train and work with the new clerk, if it is okay with the board. I will also be available to help whenever there is a need, thank you for your support, Pat. With no sense trying to talk about it, I've tried for weeks. I'll make a motion that we accept Pat's resignation. Second by Bodley. Any discussion? All in favor? She wasn't staying no matter what we do. Joe, you probably know all about these than I do.
The IT contracts?
Walk us through them.
I know very little about them, but maybe that's more than that. We got with Cory, we talked about it for quite a while now, of getting ourselves locked in with technical support in many different areas. These specific ones, everybody should have copies of all of them. One copy specifically is gonna be all of his services together. For all the different contracts that we've got with Cory, one would be a wireless network support, which is for the campground Wi-Fi area. At eleven thousand dollars, initial setup for the year.
Eleven hundred.
I'm sorry, eleven hundred. Eleven hundred dollars for the year, initial setup, with sequential years of three hundred and sixty dollars. For the campground support itself, which would be the reservation system and IT for the computer, I believe it is Cory, and that would be twelve hundred and seventy dollars, initial setup, five hundred and seventy, with sequential years. The technical support, which would include Scott's computer and Pat's, two computers anyways, at one thousand eighty dollars. And sequential years also one thousand eighty dollars, there's no overtime hours or whatever, that's added. Cory informing today that he has got in with a group that he can now do remote access IT. And he also is supporting remote, oh shoot. Well, monitoring, I just lost, virus scanning and Trojan horse and different things, correct? Malware, that would all be part of our technical support, we went with Cory and his options there. And then we also have the website support, which is just basically helping us monitor, update. There's still a lot of things in our website, which will be that is HTML writings. I don't have a lot of experience in, so I think going with that, contracts helps us out a lot. So that would be that, did you guys have any questions on the contracts themselves?
This one you should probably discuss, had we discussed the park reservations. That's the only one, that only deals with the support contract? You can lay that aside here, reservation system?
Yeah, Cory's gonna do a nice little presentation of a reservation system we're looking at doing, and that would include the support for that. Yeah, the camp, no, the campground support.
The wireless network support. That's where it's put on. Tell you the reservation system.
The wireless network, this one you do.
This one is the one we wanted to do.
Yes, this one, and put off till the reservation.
So if we want to... Go through one at a time?
Yes.
And approve it or not?
I think that's a great way to do it. Well, let's, let's start with first the technical support for the Village of Central Lake, which would be the IT support for Pat's office, the clerk's office, and Scott there. Which would be in the amount of one thousand and eighty dollars a year. Pat, just a quick question, do you use Cory quite often for technical support?
It depends, I mean, it depends if I get stuck or I have something, I've used Cory in the past, Cory is, you know, available. But I guess it just depends on what I get into on stuff, whether I have that type of problem. How he did come down and put the spyware on for us?
I think there's a definite need for support in the area and for when our clerk gets hung up. Scott, I know he uses Libby for a lot of stuff too, real good with the computers, but...
Well, the technical, the support would apply to police reports, we've got a lot of things, but it would be nice to have somebody that I could call up. I mean, we don't technically use anybody, because honestly, we don't have anything in our budget currently for that, because it would come out of the police budget. Libby does a lot of it. Well, I mean, I think there'd be something to say about the consistency and the fact that if there's anybody that could be needed, and I'm sure Cory could come in, or somebody like Cory could come in and say, these are things that you could be doing better, and, you know, catches up to speed and stuff like that. Obviously, a computer that runs efficient is, police department everyone's efficient, so.
That's very nice, we got someone around Cory. I have a question, I'm looking at, clients should receive twenty percent discount off of sixty dollars an hour, which is forty-eight dollars an hour, and that's all months of service, I see that at the five seventy-six. Any additional time shall be billed at a reduced rate of fifty dollars an hour, that's more expensive, it's not reduced.
Maybe it's a typo or a little...
Which contract are you in there?
These were gotten in different times, for different reasons. So we need to consolidate that a little bit too.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, that'll just come up in a minute then.
So let me understand, it's a yearly fee, plus the hourly fee?
No.
Did that, what he was talking to was a little bit different.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We talked about technical support.
Yep, technical support has no hourly rate, we'll get a limit to ours. If there's a priority on our projects, we upgrade, so that we know we have support of the systems we have in place now. If you want to upgrade or add a new system, of course, I mean, it makes sense to me that there's gonna be a cost for that service.
Cory, just go forward here, all of your hourly rates and discounted rates across this would be the same when I go through, it looks like the type of the roundboards just don't...
Yeah, I'll double check them everything before we're finished, but it'll default to the cheaper rate, with the exception of the website stuff, I'll do whatever the website says, what it said.
I know, I'm okay with spending it personally, because we just, we just came to that day and age, which is, we need to move forward.
Where's it come from?
What's that?
Where's it come out of?
Works contracted services.
Yeah, it would come out. It would, I think, I think what we had talked about, right now it would have to come out contracted services. But I think we would try to look at putting a, I don't know if you want to call it a technical line item in there for just that kind of thing, I don't know, that way we can track what we're paying for that stuff. I know that's a lot of work for Pat to get into the budget, but...
Through the clerk's office then?
Oh, yeah, this would be that.
Or we could take it out of the police department.
No, no, but we... It totally plays off, I mean, I can honestly tell you if it did, if all of a sudden you realize that most of the money was being spent in the police department, of course, we would budget more of the money out of the police department at that point, but right now, it is available in the budget, probably under clerk's contract and services.
In any way you look at, actually, when you look at it, it's in the one oh one, and because we work off of a fund budgeting, it doesn't really matter if it's out of Scott's, if it's out of Pat's, or where, it don't make a matter of... It's still out of the one oh one. It's still out of the one oh one account. I'd make a motion that we accept Cory's contract for technical support for the Village of Central Lake. Support.
Motion by Bodley, or from Fattie, any further discussion? Pat, roll call?
Fattie?
Yes.
Bodley?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Fair?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yep.
Cruzey?
Yes. Thank you.
Well, we ain't done for it.
All right. Yeah, let's do the contract for the wireless network installation. As you guys all remember, last month, we had looked at wireless installs for the campground. I had stopped and talked with Cory and Mission Computers, and they wanted a chance to bid on this. Their bid came in, obviously, as everybody sees it there. For the wireless network support was eleven hundred dollars for the first year, three hundred and sixty dollars for the sequential years. That eleven hundred dollars is gonna include the equipment and installation of the wireless network, which I believe is three omnidirectional antennas and a outdoor router system. It would be up to us to supply the power for the router and the omnidirectional antennas, but above that, or beyond that, pretty much is all Cory.
He's internet as well.
Uh, pardon me?
He provides the internet.
Yes, we have to provide the internet as well, through charter, which we talked about, everybody else has that contract also. So, I think that's a really good deal, obviously, we have a large cost to setting up these things moving forward. We talked also that on this, this deal, we have a splash page that we can really manipulate to our advantage later, where we can charge for advertising on it. We can, there's a lot of options for us to, of moving forward here. I think we're in the day and age where this is a good thing to have. His, Cory's quote came in, again, at eleven thousand, or eleven hundred dollars for the hookup, three hundred and sixty for each additional. Datacom Solutions out of Traverse City, their quote was, I gotta find it here, the initial, twelve hundred dollars for the installation, and there, there's where they were calling a, pretty much, it's a maintenance free setup. They just wanted basically hook it up and walk away from it, and that, again, was twelve hundred dollars with only two omnidirectional antennas and a router. They called it a turnkey installation on their side. Cory has looked into, if he gets this contract, what's for, he can remote manage that system also. If it goes down, he'll get a alarm sent directly to himself for the maintenance of it, he should be able to pretty much reset, reboot anything remotely for us. So if he's on the lake, on the north end of the lake, it goes down, if he has his phone, he should be able to respond to it quickly.
What makes it nice is he lives here. Lives here, and that gives us good communication.
The only thing I didn't see on this, Cory, and maybe you can help me, I'm not sure, is there's a minimum response time to problems, I know we talked about that a little bit. We never did, we never did narrow it down.
No, I can respond within twenty-four hours, whether or not something's fixed or not within twenty-four hours, this is a different story, but that just requires, it requires parts that have to be ordered, we have to, whatever the downtime is, is gonna be done. With this omnidirectional network, there's three different antennas, if any one of them go down, the network remains. If the main one that's providing a signal, the other two go down, we can move one of those into that spot, so you still end up with a network. The chances of all three of them going out at the same time would be unlikely, on sort of a huge power surge of some sort that took out the whole system. Cut all the trees down, so they don't get touched.
Do we know him longer?
Let's talk about that in a next one. Maybe he could ricochet off of that.
Well, I think, and also with going with this, guys, we need to kind of look at the bigger picture. If we're gonna do wireless, obviously, we have to do internet too, which is the charter's contract, everybody should also have a copy of that. Which, with the charter contract, at a two hundred, for two hundred dollars a month, it's a five meg down and a five meg up rate. Again, according to Andrew with Charter, there's no contract on this, we can change it at our leisure. It'd be two hundred dollars a month, plus the installation cost for that, and that's, again, that's the hundred meg down, five meg up. We can drop that down to a hundred, or fifty meg down, five meg up, for I believe it was one thirty, one fifteen a month. So I think if we're gonna, if we're gonna pass one, we kind of gotta do both of them. Again, like I had said last month, I also contacted Tempest Services out of Gaylor, who didn't even want to get into the business of wifi and campgrounds.
I think if we're go- if we're going to wifi, we probably don't have many options other than Charter. Am I correct on that? It's it's Charter or?
There's other options that are much slower.
Yeah.
Charter's got the best features.
On number six, Corey, you say support not to exceed one hour of service per month.
That's all.
Can I assume that to mean twelve hours per year? Because the park is full six months.
Yes.
I mean, I'm not, I'm just, it's a question that we do.
Yes. Twelve, twelve hours per year.
Okay.
After initial setup?
After initial setup.
And it says additional support shall be built at a discounted rate, and that will be the.
It just says you want another omnidirectional antenna, so.
No, but at what rate? Just because I look at it at the contract.
Forty-five.
Forty-five.
Okay, I mean, I just think it should.
This states.
This one's forty-eight.
No.
On the next page, yes.
Go to your next page.
Uh, it's, I have forty-five.
Oh, I think there's one hour points of difference.
Okay.
It's there.
I didn't see it. Card pop.
Okay.
Okay, okay. A bit more, except. Mission Computers, that's a. Were you? Charter's bid for the internet service in the park and Mission Computers bid for installation of wireless break points and router. Motion by Chapman.
Support.
That Mission Computers contract for wireless support and Charter business for internet provider. Support by Bannery. Any other discussion? I just have one, and I don't go and take care of it. Charter says this contract is meant to be accepted by Wednesday, January twenty thirteen, thousand and thirteen, so you'll make sure it still stays two hundred dollars, right?
Yes, yes, I will get back with them the cheaper one.
What's that? Why aren't you going with the cheaper, the one thirty-five a month? If they're camping, it don't have to be real fast.
Well, what you end up with there actually is it's all in, it's not necessarily the speed of it, it's the amount of people you're going to have on it. And you're you're absolutely right. At different months, we will drop down to the cheapest one. We'll probably start at the slower speed and as we need bump up to the the larger speed. But if we don't approve going the larger, we're stuck at the lower.
Well, if we're stuck at the lower, on vacation, that'd be sick. Computer. I'm, I'm sorry, Ed. You know, most I am for them because a lot of the people that come up camping and this, they, they're business owners. And they can conduct their business while they're on vacation. And it's just begun. Then they go to the other parks because after, I mean, they do, they they request it. They want a wifi connection. And I honestly don't think it's for their kids to play on their computers or their games. A lot of it is from from adults who want to be able to stay in touch with their business.
Ellsworth instituted the wifi a little while ago, and they've had a huge response in their campground with it.
And I agree well. I am all for it. We start off with the slower speed and keep it there until somebody says something. I mean, I am, I agree. Why would we automatically go for the two hundred?
You can track all the use and you'll know whether the slowest speed or lowest.
I'll be able to see how the band was being used, how many, what is going to happen is we'll offset controls in there that won't give a whole pie to everybody. It took one, or to one person, and that's that controls in there that'll divvy up little pieces to people as they join. And that helps to control the the flow. And the more people you have, the smaller piece of pie that it gets.
So you'll know, you'll advise us when it's time to.
Hold on.
If it, if it comes to that.
So the motion for the month is two hundred and one? Or it was the lower? What do we have?
Not to exceed. I think we agree we'll start with the lower.
Have to exceed two hundred?
And we're, yeah, we're going to start at the lower, which would be a hundred and fifteen a month. But I don't think we want to wait for a council meeting to bump up, so we're saying not to exceed two hundred a month. So that way, if we have to bump up, it can be done internally.
I'm sure if it becomes a problem here from our park manager.
I'm sure we will, yeah.
You know what I'm saying? So if if it's at the lower, it's at the lower speed, and nobody's saying anything to Lyle, we're going to stay there.
Yeah, we're good.
Well, I'm sure well with somebody else.
Cousin from Greek. Lyle's in for a big surprise when he comes up.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Taylor.
Yes.
Dayan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Chapman.
Yes.
Bodle.
Yes.
Bannery.
Yes.
Cruzey.
Yes. So is your motion passed?
Thank you. She did it without stumbling. I see her roll backwards.
Shake it up.
Okay, guys, our next one is going to be our website support. Again, the website support was five hundred and seventy-six dollars per year. At extra hours purchased for forty-five dollars per hour. This is the one that I actually, I had Corey do this one up back when we first launched the website and moved forward. And so I'm not necessarily sure that this at this time is is a huge bonus or benefit to us in cost. We have most of our material on the website that we are going to put on there. And anything that we don't, even at a standard hour with Corey at sixty dollars an hour, I'm not sure that we're going to spend more money. So at this time, I think we should wait on the website support. It's a little ironic that this is the first one I had to do work on and had to do work the hardest to get. It's also the one that you make the least amount of money on.
That would be, my option would be to hold off on the website support right now, but if anybody else has a question, they want to, they think it should be, but.
You've been more involved in the website than me, so I wonder if I'll just go with an recommendation.
Denise?
I, I would make a motion to table it.
Okay.
Motion by Bannery, support by Bodley to table the website support contract. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
We are out to do this, correct? Yes. Okay.
Right? This is on our park reservation system that we talked about, and Corey's done a lot of work on it, and he has all yours.
Well, thank you. I've been asked to look in the website reservations system for the village for the campground. I've looked at three or four different options out there. Actually, there's a lot of bad campground reservation software out there. There's a lot of bad reservation software in general. It's hard to use. It's confusing. It's it doesn't interface well with online payments. I narrowed it down to three options. From those three options, I talked to each company. This is the one that I decided to show tonight. This is a company called Sunrise, and they they have a two-part system. First off, there's the online component. Customer that that would be interested in accessing, re- reserving a campground site would be able to access it from our website. There'd be a link to to this page or a page similar to this one up here. I don't know if everybody can see that or not. But what this is, is it is a calendar. They're thanking.
Thanks.
Uh, that's a good bet. There's a calendar, so if a customer comes in and wants to reserve a series of days, they can select the days. They can say what type of site do they want. These are specified by ops, so that, you know, if you want a back-end site. Oh, I might have to redo this. I'm sorry. So this shows all the available sites that are that are available, the eleventh through the fifteenth. We would have, be able to choose by type of site. If there were tent sites or back-end site only sites, like for instance, this label, these are labeled as back-end only sites. If you had a, you can specify what kind of vehicle you have or the type, the length, because obviously these are different lengths. If you have any slide-outs, and then change, so that means that you can have a slide-out. If you require a twenty amp service, and then you're able to choose a site, and then click on it and choose them from a list. It shows you the site that you would have. The the estimate of how much it would cost. It will let you go ahead and continue. You type in information. This is as a customer. And you should keep, continue to fill it out. I don't know if it'll let me do this. We'll, I'll give some.
What's nice with this system, too, I've looked at it quite a bit with Corey, you almost can't mess it up. If you notice up in the upper left-hand corner there, there's a red box. Basically, it's telling you you didn't do something. You got to complete it before you can move on. And also, if you get to the very end and shut down without actually finishing it, it'll send you an email that tells you you didn't finish your reservation.
And it takes you from this screen. It probably is not letting you through.
That will only compute if it's Lyle.
Well, this actually will be a website that customers can see. It'll link.
But it will come into his computer.
It will. This is the front end. This is what the customers will see. But there's a back-end system. And we refresh this to make sure we're still connected. And this would be the back end of the system. Once a customer's gone ahead and reserved their campsite, this is what Lyle or anybody else can see if they're looking with us, whoever's managing the site. The sites are all numbered and labeled. The days of the week are across the top. It shows you who's coming in and who's departing and when they're going to be there. It shows you ten sites at a time, one through ten. And then you're able to, this page through a few multiple now, eleven through twenty and so on. You're able to see who's coming in. So I can click on this customer. He's checked in. I double-click on him. It tells me information about him that's already been entered because he's already checked in, but it shows you the total of reservation, the arrival date, the departure date, who's in. You can have address information, what kind of trailer they have, what kind of vehicle they have, so that you don't have people, well, you have record of it anyway. We'll go back here. It'll also, also show you via map, so you're able to click and see who's on. It's not going to let me do it on this demo. You're able to create new reservations from the site. So this is the admin reservation. A, Lyle or whoever's down there, or even during the off-monts, will be able to go here, create a new reservation and type everything in. What that does by keeping, him keeping reservations here and the online site, they're synced together. So there's, you'll see what's happening online. You'll be able to make your own reservations. Anything that you made will show us taken online. And it'll show you, from the back end here, it'll show you the current guest, who's staying where, how much they paid, if they owe any money, depending on how we have it set up. You can click on guests and find out information about them. Schedule arrivals, you'll know how many people are due to come in and where they're, how many nights they have and how much they owe before they come in. Schedule departures, you know who's leaving, recent reservations online or in person, recent invoices. What's nice about this too is now we're able to run reports. We're able to look at, I mean, there's, there's a million different reports here. Eight pages of reports. And we'll have to figure out which will be most useful, but you can look at all invoices over a certain date range of guests with a certain tag. You want to know everybody that came in with four trucks, you can do that. All reservations on a particular site. You can look at deposit reports. And there's just an endless number. Once you have this information, we can shuffle it any way you want. It's a larger database that we just have to ask the right questions to get, get our answers. Now, as far as cost goes, well, before I hit cost, there's also online training. So let's say somebody forgot how to check in a guest. Now, I'll show this video. It's like a two-minute video. In this screen video, we will show you how to create a new reservation. This is the new reservations. You can always get to this screen by clicking on the view reservation, but to start with, we'll select the arrival date and the departure date. This will then populate a list of sites that are available for that date range. You can filter this further by site type, amenities, and RV type. It updates in real time the number of sites available or the criteria which you are putting in. We will then select our site type, our site name. And you can view the site details. Once we have our site selected, then we can choose the guest that will be staying at our site. You can either search for a guest or you can create a guest. To create a guest, please select the create guest button. The only required field within this window is the first and last name. Other fields are email, address, and phone number. To create, click the create button. Once we have our guest, we can select the membership that applies to their reservation. We can add occupancy. And we can also add RV or an additional vehicle. In this screen, there is no required field. You can add as much information as the customer gives. And here is the screen for reservation charges. It's updated in real time as you create the reservation and gives you the total here. You can also send an email confirmation to your customer by clicking here. Whenever you can set to create the reservation, simply click the create reservation. Two things for the network here. If you're on it here, campground as an administrator, you can manually rate the reservation by clicking here. Also, the create and checking button here is only available if the current date and the arrival date are the same thing. That concludes creating a reservation. So that kind of shows how easy it was. I actually spoke with a woman out of Maine that owns a campground that's implementing this software. They're switching from a different, a different company, actually, one of them that I had looked at for for Central A. And it was much more complicated, harder to use, and they charged higher rates. And it was much more complicated, harder to use, and they charged higher rates. She said her favorite thing about this, this particular one is the ease of use. But it also, when they book a reservation, it gives them a confirmation email a few days before. I imagine we'd set that up. It gives them a reminder email that they're, they're set for their reservation. And then after they check out, it sends them a thank you email. So what that does is it helps with customer retention. I get to maybe another reservation next year or later on in the summer if I had that reminder. And you can put coupons in those emails. You could say, you know, don't forget, you know, Bachman's has got a special going on this week. Or, you know, however you wanted to do it. But that is, that's something that's really not advertised well on this, but it's something that the software does as well. This is a whole system, so this would be, the only way we take reservations would be through this particular system. Otherwise, you defeat the purpose of it. It does require you to have credit card processing, which I'm not aware that the village currently has. I talked, talked with this company, put extra length, spoke to the president of Sunrise. And they recommended one of three. And out of those three, they lean strongly towards one called JetPay. And I, I contacted JetPay and I do have a rate sheet, which I believe Joe has.
Cory, are you done with this presentation at the current time? So we'll kick the light out and go over the pay scales and stuff like that.
Well, I can show, I was gonna show, taking credit card two.
Okay.
Because one, one of the things with the credit cards is you actually have to have a machine. There'd be a little USB device that would plug into the computer that would allow you to take cards. And it's actually fairly simple. I was gonna show just so that you have an idea. I think this is like thirty seconds, forty-five second. In this training video, we will show you how to accept the card swipe.
I was talking about...
And scroll down and make some hand gestures. Then simply choose the card which you'll be taking. Card number field will automatically take the person. When you're ready, click, click the flip to swipe button. Swipe your card and your card is going to be good. Then you're gonna take your payment. That concludes... So this would be the entire credit card processing for the campground. You wouldn't have two different systems. You wouldn't have several machines that you would swipe and have to balance against an online payment. So that's all I needed for the, for the video portion of it.
Thank you. Will you turn that light back on, please? Thank you. Cory, is there, is there any credit card that's limited in the JetPay? We've discovered, I mean, do they pretty much accept, accept all of them?
Everything except American Express is a little bit more expensive.
Guys, I would have got some more. I just got it this afternoon also and I actually found my copies in the office over there. Cory, can they pay online ahead of time and show up and not have to bother Lyle? Or do I have to go to Lyle?
I'll, I'll, I would decide to set it up. You're still gonna have to check in, I imagine.
Check in, but I'm saying...
As far as swiping credit cards, my recommendation would be to have pay for, pay in full online. And be done with, don't do deposits, don't do anything. And I also recommend, because there's, there's a cost to this service. And in an attempt to recoup some of the costs of this service, charge a convenience fee online. And not, not a large amount, five dollars just per reservation. That helps to recoup the cost because they, they do charge. There's a seventy-nine dollar fee per month for the system. There's a three-dollar and fifty cent per reservation taken online. So if you charge five dollars per online reservation, that'll recoup that cost.
Now, we're only open for six months of the year, so it wouldn't be, it don't wanna be seventy-nine mon, seventy-nine dollars for six months, right?
No, that's actually a full year. You want to take reservations all...
Oh, yeah, we would. That's right.
And another thing I found quite interesting in talking to the woman in Maine was most of the reservations were made between eleven P.M. and one A.M. So...
Really?
Yeah, that's what she told me. That's what, that's what she seen on her end.
Oh, my.
So obviously, nobody's gonna be calling at that hour or at least answering the phones.
Did she mention when they have a time, I was wondering, when the day starts or when the day ends?
You know, I didn't get into that, whether, she said she'd be happy to answer any of the questions.
There's a check-in, a check-in time and a waiting time that's got to be also set.
Well, what this company will do is they will, they will send a campground package with all that information. Will request you all that information. They've done this before for many different campgrounds. So they, they know the ins and outs and the checkout times and how to, how to set things up.
Cory, a couple of quick questions. Ken just pointed out to me, there's a, there's a monthly minimum fee of twenty-five dollars for the JetPay.
Well, I negotiated on behalf of the village and they will waive that because they're only using six months of the year.
Okay. Well, that's great because there's also a debit card transaction fee of point one fifteen cents, actually. And, and a monthly of two dollars and fifty cents. And there's also a ACH fee of twelve ninety-five.
Those are all optional. You can choose not to accept debit cards.
Okay.
You do want to do the GetReporting, I talked to, I want to remember the name, Tyler, Mr. Tyler. At great length this afternoon, after I had spoken, after I'd given you that call, he said that you do want that two-dollar-and-fifty-cent fee monthly from GetReporting.com. What that does is if you ever have to dispute a charge, that's a line item, everything that's been purchased. So he says that for two dollars and fifty cents a month, it's a way that you can check yourself. The automatic clearinghouse rates and fees, that, automatic clearinghouse has to do with checks. If you want to make sure the check that somebody is writing you is good, you choose not to accept checks, first off. But if you want to choose, you can choose to purchase their service. That is an extra add-on thing. And what that allows you to do is take in the routing number and the check number and it will authorize that check if there's funds in the account. If there's not funds in the account, that's declined and you don't take the check. Monthly access is twelve dollars and ninety-five cents. I asked him about that. What, what that has to do with, was they take on all the PCI compliance issues. They don't, they don't pass that on to you. They have an insurance policy of type, of sorts, that helps to protect you against getting bad checks and bad credit cards. So that's what the, the monthly access is. And we can speak with him again if there's more questions.